Good evening. I would like to call this Planning Commission meeting of June 25th to order. Madam Secretary, will you take a roll?
Commissioner Verino.
Here.
Commissioner Alderetti.
Here.
Vice Chair Contreras Leo.
Here.
Chair McLaughlin.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yes.
Chair, you have corner.
Thank you. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Chairman?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be applied of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, does any member of the public have any public comments that are non-agenda items? If you filled out a card, we have it. If you haven't filled out a card, please do so. I will call the first person, and that's going to be Barbara Rook- Bobby Rooker. Bobby, you're up.
Good evening. I knew that would throw you. The city and people know me as Bobby, not Barbara. I am Barbara Rooker, and I live in Park Santiago. I have been in my home since 1963. However, I was raised in South Santa Ana and have lived, moved straight across town. My concern is 2525 North Main. The entrance there at Edgewood and Main is so congested now, and then to put in a large facility with 495 units would really congest us a lot more than it is. I know that looking at the plans, that all traffic, that to get into their facility for parking is on Main Street. You cannot make a left-hand turn on Main into the facility, and therefore, most of the people would have to come Santiago to Santa Clara to get in, to make a right-hand turn on Main to get in. I am a walker. I cannot imagine any more cars in my neighborhood that won't stop for me, as it is, at a stop sign to let me across. I am very concerned about the congestion and just way too many. And I know that they have planned for parking, but there is not going to be a parking. We have a lovely neighborhood, and it has a lot of historic homes, and I really hope that planning will really think about not endorsing this plan. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here. My name is Lisa Gans, and I'm a resident of Park Santiago. Tonight, I'm here to state opposition and raise concerns over the cumulative impact of all the high-density apartments built or being proposed in Santa Ana. To my knowledge, there are four proposed apartment developments within less than a mile to Park Santiago. 2525 North Main Street, 517 units, although I've heard dispute of four, a little over 400, or 419. 2700 North Main Street, 247 units. Transform Main Place, 1,900 residential units. 702 1078 West Town and Country, which was the city of Orange, 653 apartments and 74 townhomes. That's more than, almost 3,500 permanent units, in addition to the recently-built 182 units at Prisma and 260 units at 1110 on Town and Country, which is still approximately 50 percent vacant. 3,391 units equates to at least 7,000 more residential vehicles. Santa Ana is already the most overcrowded and dense city in the county, and the close proximity of all these projects will create a significantly negative impact to resources, congestion, traffic, and overpopulation to the region. When discussing a possible tax increase to offset a budget deficit at last week's council meeting, Councilman Tenaharo stated the city doesn't have enough pol- doesn't have enough police to currently protect the residents or the funds and staffing for street repairs, parks and wrecks, and the library. We can't take care of our existing residents, so why strain services more? Our cities in the county have, other cities in the county have more room for housing development and are aggressively addressing housing shortages with thousands of new startups. Social engineers who state the future as in high-density rental units are really only concerned with reducing the cost of development and the increased tax revenue for the city. These social engineers claim millennials want to live in an urban lived workspace, but according to the U.S. Census, almost 40 percent of California millennials aged 14 to 34 are still living at home with mom and dad. Specifically related to the 2525 North Main project, the size and scope of this project does not fit the area. 517 units and 441 parking spots mean overflow in a single-family neighborhoods with more than 1,000 vehicles in the area. More vehicles means longer lights and congestion at all intersections, including the I-5, which is already at a standstill no matter what time of the day. More traffic means more emissions, more noise, more safety issues, especially at the Discovery Cube across the street, and reduced quality of life for existing residents. Developers state that they would have, would not have acquired the site had the city staff not identified it as an unlimited density and unlimited height residential site over three years ago. I urge the Planning Department to listen to the neighbors who will be impacted the most and oppose rezoning for the high-density development. I believe an alternative plan to these properties can be found, and welcome working with the department to reach a mutually agreeable solution. Thank you.
I'm Rory. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me tonight. Sounds like she wrote mine, but I actually wrote my own. There are multiple reasons Park Santiago neighbors have come together along with several other surrounding neighborhoods to propose a project for 2525 Main Street. Many obvious ones have been brought to the city's attention through emails, letters, phone calls, city council, planning meetings. Main Street will be unable to function as a, as an intended, as it is intended to be a arterial road for transportation. The city is concerned about adding 60 cars during a non-peak hours at Grand and Santa Clara due to the fact that Spring Center, actually, it's Spring Charter School, would like to add two more grades to this curriculum. This is interesting considering the minute size that this would compare to not only 2525 cars, but also all these other projects that are completed, nearing completion, and are proposed, the 300 more units in a two-block area. Which brings us to the lack of services, as Lisa mentioned. The city already can't provide for its existing residents, as it is. Inadequate infrastructure, water, and electricity as well. The negative impact on Santiago Park will, there will be a negative impact on the park, on the Santiago Park incurred because of its mere size of the park and the high density of the project planned at the edge of the park, not to mention a bad idea that I heard someone floated using the park as an exit for the 2525 Main complex. Pollution, noise, crime, as Lisa also noted, all these are negative impacts that come highly, with a highly-density, density complex. This is only, this is the only highly-density project next to a neighborhood and also within a neighborhood in the city. These are just a few reasons, I'm sure you've already heard them. The developer purchased this property knowing what its existing limitations are, and now asks for major changes in zoning not conducive to park, to the park or the neighborhood which is in its boundaries. When I purchased my home years ago, I had planned to build a garage matching the Tudor style house with a roof height of 22 feet. Due to recent building and code changes, some as recent as last month, I am unable to build the garage the height of my house, which would have afforded me a Tud level garage. This while the developer seeks to build a seven-story project, not five as he had said. I am unimpressed with Jose Solario, who is supposed to be representing our neighborhood as we are his constituents. Too many times, elected officials make decisions because they think they know better than those they're serving. In reality, their responsibility is to be an information vehicle between the people and the government agencies. Clearly, Mr. Solario is a failure as a representative for all, for the well-being of the city, Park Santiago neighborhood, and the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Moorhead. I live in Park Santiago, and I'll be very brief. Basically, this project at 2525 North Main is the wrong type of project in the wrong location. We need to keep our commercial spaces on that street. By the time all the residents are in the area for all the new proposed projects, we're going to need commercial space for those people to work. Don't take away this opportunity of something that's already zoned for the correct use. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else at this time that would like to speak on a non-agendized item for this evening? Hearing none, the public comments are closed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
So move.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Six-zero vote. We will now move on to the regular business calendar. Please be advised that the actions of the Planning Commission shall become effective on the, on the day following the first regularly scheduled city council meeting after the 10-day appeal period, unless, if allowed by Santa Ana Municipal Code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council, and a copy is sent to the Planning Department within 10 days of the commission's action, or unless set for a public hearing by the city council. An appeal from the decision or requirement of the Planning Commission may be made by any interested party, individual, or group. At this time, I would like to consider item number one, Conditional Use Permit Number 2018-13, to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption at Hiro Nori Restaurant located at 3394 South Bristol Street, Unit A. Did you want to?
Yes, I'd like to introduce to you Eric Martin. He is a volunteer in our, intern in our planning division. He's been with us for approximately six months, and he is a recent graduate, 2018, of UCI's Urban Planning Program. So, this is, he's very excited to be here, and we are very grateful for the work that he's done while he's been with us.
Okay, welcome, and cheers.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today before you, we have a conditional use, conditional use permit application for the sale of alcohol on-premise, for on-premise consumption at a new restaurant named Hiro Nori. The, it is located at 3394 South Bristol Street, Unit A. Again, this is for conditional use permit to grant a Type 41 ABC license for on-premise consumption of alcohol at a new restaurant. Tenant improvements are currently underway. This is the site location. It is located within an integrated shopping center at the corner of Bristol and Alton. It is anchored by Target, as you can see, and the subject unit is within a building. Again, I just want to say that there are extensive site improvements going on right now, so if you see that building, it's actually going to be split in half, and this is the This is the floor plan. It spans approximately 1,400 square feet. If you look at those red boxes, that is where the alcohol is going to be stored. It is approximately a total, it's a total of 16 square feet for alcohol storage, and it's not going to exceed the 5 percent maximum. This is the site photo. The unit is going to be towards the left. It's a little difficult to see each unit, but as you can see, there is going to be extensive facade improvements and tenant improvements within that shopping center. The site is going to meet all the standards of the Santa Ana Municipal Code. It's going to serve alcohol and provide a service to its visitors. The sale of alcoholic beverages will contribute to the overall economic success of businesses, small businesses within the integrated shopping center, and the standards will ensure that the restaurant will not deviate from the planned operations. With that being said, we do, the staff recommends approval of the Conditional Use Permit 2018-13. And I am available to answer any questions, as well as an associate who can answer any operational questions.
First thing first, is there any communications that we need to make known at this point on the pressures? No? All right. Does any of the Commissioners have a question of staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this question is for staff. I noticed that in the minutes from the last permit that was issued, there was a condition that the total gross yearly sales of alcohol for the marketing restaurant should not exceed the grossly yearly sales of food and other non-alcoholic items. Has, had this been done before prior to that condition or decision that was made last week, or the last planning commission?
Good evening, Commissioners. If you recall, that was actually a condition that was requested by the Planning Commission. It's something-
My question is, has that been done before, or prior to that meeting?
It's something that we've done in past applications. It's something that we look at for, in particular, for applications that might have an issue in terms of deviating from the standards, but it's not very common.
Okay. And is it, since the Commissioners are here now, was that because of the area, or why was that condition placed? I'm just curious, because, you know, the Commission, I have never seen that condition placed in a-
This is not a discussion point for us to discuss with you.
Okay.
Okay, at this point in time, we're on item number one, and if you have a question relative to item number one, then please ask that question, but to ask us, if that's not-
Okay, okay, I understand. I just want to know if that's been done before. Okay, thank you.
No further questions of staff. Okay? Would the applicant at this point in time like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners and staffs. It's great to be here. My name is Joey with Tate and Associates, representative of the restaurant owner, Hiro, Hiro Nori, and we, we are just really glad to be here today. We don't have any issues with the conditions of approvals, and if you have any questions, myself and Hiro of Hiro Nori are here to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant? Mr. Chairman, I think I have. Go ahead.
I understand this will be, going to be a Japanese restaurant, and your, on your application indicated traditional food and some ramen, so your request for Type 41 is only self-serve beer, and why is it also able to continue to serve your traditional Japanese sake, or something like that? Is that reason why you want to apply for Type 41?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on this item number one?
We have not.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing. If there's anyone that'd like to speak on this item at this point in time, please do so, and fill out a card. I have no cards at this point in time for this item. Does anyone like to speak on item number one at this time? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion on item number one? Out, Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a CUP, CUP number 2018-13.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Vote is six-zero. At this time and place, we are considering item number two, variance numbers 2018-04, 2018-05, and 2018-06, to convert an existing 24,428-square-foot office building and construct a 4,940-square-foot addition with the reduction required, with a reduction in required setbacks, vehicle distance requirement from nearby intersection, and fence height, and amendment to application 2018-05 to allow a zone change from arterial commercial C5 and single-family resident R1 and arterial commercial, to arterial commercial C5 for Enovate Public Charter School located at 1450 East 17th Street. Do any of the Commissioners have anything to disclose at this time? I do, I-
Jill Arthur reached out to me to describe the project and answer any questions I have.
Okay.
I received an email from Ms. Katie Hart.
Okay. All right. And I too had a discussion with, Jill Arthur reached out and had a discussion with several people from Enovate. Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I received a message from Tina Alcaraz that was a presentation.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Mendoza, can you repeat that name of the person I contacted?
Yes, it was Tina Alcaraz, a resident.
Okay, staff will make your presentation. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Before you, we have Enovate Charter Public High School requesting an amendment application and three variances. The project site is located at 1440 and 1450 East 17th Street. As previously mentioned, this is an existing office building, two-story office building being converted into a public charter high school with the addition of a 400, 4,900-square-foot addition to the south of the existing building. As part of the project, we, they're proposing outdoor recreation, some extensive facade improvement to the existing building, and some onsite improvements that will have the parking lot restriping, landscaping, and lighting. The project site is located off of 17th Street and Wright Street on the southwest of 17th These are current site photos. The photo on your left is a photo face off of 17th Street. The photo on the right is the backside of the building. This is a surface parking. The building was constructed in 1969, and since then has not have, has not had any improvement. Thus far, you can see the parking lot that does, would require the restriping. The site is located within the general, general commercials, general plan designation. It does have an existing single-family residential zoning district, as well as single-family residential with the B suffix that allows parking, and a split zone with the arterial commercial C5. The amendment application would, is proposing to rezone the existing zoning, existing lots and convert them all into arterial commercial, making it consistent with the general plan to general commercial. The site is, the existing surrounding laws and uses consist of medical and professional offices to the north, a religious institution to the east, and single-family residents to the south and west of the subject parcel. A school, a school use is allowed by right in the arterial commercial. Some of the zoning code sections that will be affected to this, for the project are the development standards, a vehicle access requirement, and the wall proposed. This is a current, this is a proposed site plan. The existing building is staying at its location with the addition to the south of the building, outdoor basketball, and some surface parking. This is a floor plan of the proposed building. As you can see, on the first floor, will have various classrooms to the south and the locker rooms on, sorry, to the north, but the locker rooms on the south. These are the proposed elevations. As you could, like, previously mentioned, they will receive some extensive facade improvements, and these are the renderings. This is a view from the parking lot at the rear, and this view is from 17th Street. On-site circulation for the project will consist of an entrance only on Wright Street and an exit only on 17th Street. And this would allow any onsite circulation. As proposed, the traffic study does show the stacking, and they will not have any impacts on 17th Street. So today, we are requesting three variances. The first variance are for the front and side yard setback. This is an existing building built in 1969, and was built approximately 14 feet away from the property line in the south, and eight feet to the east of the parcel. In addition to the front and side yard setback variance, the applicant is requesting a landscape variance as well. They currently meet 14 feet on 17th Street. They are required 15 feet. And lastly, they are requesting a variance for a fence that is proposed onsite, to exceed the allowable for maximum height. And as proposed, they're required, based on the square footage of classroom and office space, succeed in parking spaces. They're providing 70, 70, 70 parking spaces onsite. As you can see, the amendment application would rezone the R1B suffix to the south and the single-family R1 to the west, making it consistent to the C5 currently on the south, on the north part. And again, this is to make it consistent to the general plan that is a general commercial. For the first front variance requested, the setback for the, for the par, for the project currently has between eight to 14 feet in the front and side yard setback. The existing conditions, existing setback conditions are similar along 17th Street, the 17th Street corridor, so allowing the variance, the existing building to stay as is would be consistent to the surrounding buildings. Demolition of the partial building would result in a hardship for both the, the school and the property, as would result in a hardship if they were to remove and meet the 15-foot setback, they would reduce the size of the school and reduce the number of students. The second variance is for the driveway entrance. The Santa Ana Municipal Code requires 150 feet off of any intersection. As proposed, the project would allow, the project is located between, is located 142 feet off of 17 and Wright Street intersection. The applicant is proposing to consolidate two exit driveways and making a one, again, only meeting the 142 feet off of the intersection, therefore requesting the variance. And lastly, the third variance is for a wall height to exceed the allowed four feet maximum within the side setback. The proposed fence is a 10-foot-high wall off of an ornamental wrought iron fence on the east of the subject parcel. This would allow and minimize any impacts to the public if, for example, a basketball is to go on the street or in the parking lot. And as, in conclusion, staff recommends, that this, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council the Adopt an Ordinance Amendment Application Number 2018-4, and adopt resolution variances 2018-4 as condition to allow reduction required setback. Adopt variance number 2018-5 as condition to allow driveway within 150 feet of a street intersection, and adopt a resolution approving variance 2018-6 as condition to allow an increase in allowable fence height. Both the applicant and the president of the school is here to answer any questions if you guys have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does any of the Commissioners have any questions of staff? I do, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
Could you, is there was a traffic study been conducted on the, on this project?
Yes, there was.
The, what, could you give me more, a little bit more detail about the, what the result of traffic study? And my, one area, my, my concern is the, the congestion with made cars for the drop-off student and pickup student during, you know, the, the school time.
So yes, there was a traffic study conducted for the site. The school does propose no drive student policy, so only car pools would be allowed onsite. And secondly, they are proposing staggered schedules, so they can have a balance between a certain grade and the other grade, so not all students or car pools are onsite at the same time. In addition, sorry, they are also proposing a double drop-off lane if needed. In addition, sorry, they are also proposing a double drop-off lane if needed.
Okay, anything else? Beatrice?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see on the executive summary that mentions that there were twenty people from the community. And then in the table one, it says there were twenty-five. Twenty, twenty-five.
We had approximately twenty attendees at the Sunshine Ordinance Meeting. It could have been staff overlooked it.
And the other question is, did we have transcripts for the meeting or not for the Sunshine Ordinance meeting?
We did. Unfortunately, we, yeah, we didn't put them in the staff report.
Okay, is there a reason why? Because I know we got them in the last report.
Yeah, I just, those neglected to put in the staff report. So my error. So, but the meeting, I can summarize it. It was about twenty, twenty-five people were there. There were just questions about the school. There was no major issues raised at that time at the Sunshine Meeting. There was a subsequent neighborhood meeting. Again, there was not really many issues raised about the project at that time either. So then the last four months has been two neighborhood meetings to talk about the project.
Do you remember what the discussion was on the parking? It just said parking and say it was a problem or not.
Just asking about the parking requirement for the school and does the site accommodate the parking for the school? And it does. There's a surplus of parking on the site.
But do you remember there were concerns from the community about parking and traffic?
That was the parking, was I mean, what was how many parking spaces are required on the site?
I'm asking because I would have liked to see it so that I could, you know, see what the community was.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, thank you. So what was the prior use of the property and when did it stop being used if it had been, if it hasn't?
There are multiple offices, businesses. From our understanding and our research, there was still an active business. It hasn't been long. I would say maybe no more than a year, vacant.
And do we know anything about the usage of parking there or traffic caused by that, the pre-exist, the prior use? I'm not sure that we would, but I thought I'd ask.
Currently, there's a couple of medical offices operating at the site. When I was there on Thursday, it was maybe five percent of the parking lot was being utilized. I think the transition is occurring right now to get the next tenant in the building to get it fully occupied, which this school will do or take the entire building up. So it's minimal, very minimal impacts.
The other question I had related to the policy behind the one hundred and fifty-foot driveway within an intersection. So we're, I think the request is to one forty-two, but what's the reasoning behind the one fifty?
That is a requirement of the arterial commercial standards. It's, these C five is on arterial streets. The main focus of that zoning is to keep traffic moving along the street. So it wants less driveways and more spread out. So this is really more critical if it's on Seventeenth Street. You've got the driveway coming in. An entrance on Seventeenth Street would impact traffic. Going about forty-five miles an hour, going westbound, cars stopping to get in or stacking up on the streets like you've seen in other schools would be a severe impact on Seventeenth Street. Wright Street's a secondary street, so it's less of a concern, but it's really mainly to keep traffic flowing. So we don't see this as a main issue because it's a Wright Street, a secondary street. There's plenty of stacking lane on the site. Entrance is on Wright Street, only not on Seventeenth Street. So a lot of factors come into play or makes it really not an issue in staff's mind at this driveway location, so.
Great, thank you for that.
Thank you. I don't know if the question's for you or for the applicant. Will parking be monitored for pickups so that they're not parking in the neighborhood and they go into the actual school for pickups?
Yes, the applicant is proposing to have five monitors on-site at all times during morning and afternoon pickup.
Thank you.
Any questions? I just have one question. Can you go back to that drop-off, pickup-drop-off loop? Okay, so my question is, on the exit side of this, is it a right-hand turn only?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Okay. I mean, the flow is sort of, I mean, in my mind, I'd almost float opposite because exiting out at the intersection is going to be a little bit easier than exiting out in the middle of two intersections.
A couple of reasons, excuse me, a couple of reasons why it's designed this way. One is they don't want to, they want to avoid cut through traffic in the neighborhood. If you have an exit on Wright Street, you can go either way. This makes it very unlikely if someone's going to go into the property, loop around, come out Seventeenth Street, loop again, another half circle, and go down south on Wright Street. And second of all, people, once they go down Seventeenth Street, they're going to shoot either towards the five, fifty-five, forty-eight to the west or turn and go to the five, forty-eight to the, what, fifty-five to the east, five to the west, or right, right saw.
To your point, Vincent, I understand what you said. I could argue that I could drop somebody off on Wright Street and go straight ahead and go to Sixteenth Street and exit out of Sixteenth Street. Doesn't make sense, but it could happen. I mean, I think the other side is, what are we doing to prevent any driving through the neighborhood at all at this point in time? Because there is the potential that that could happen.
Yeah, the five monitors, they can't drop off till they get on school property. They have monitors up at the Seventeenth and Wright Street intersection, one down by the driveway, and then three internal. So they're directing it. The other reason why the driveway, the entrance is on Wright Street is because if you have it on Seventeenth Street, you're going to get, which you see at a lot of schools, without stacking on Seventeenth Street in the morning hours.
Right.
We got twenty or thirty cars and that's what we don't want there either.
But that's why, that's why the stacking question could be easier done if you went in the opposite direction. My opinion, I'm just saying, if you went in the opposite direction, you wouldn't have the stacking problem because you already have it. Because if you're exiting here and people are coming in on Seventeenth Street, the stack-up is going to be there. So you're going to be stacked up also at the exit because people can't make a left-hand turn. They can only make a right-hand turn. So they're going to wait until that queue line goes down.
But they'll, yes, but at least they'll be stacking on the property and not on the street. Yeah, sure.
I get it, but it's, you know, for me, it's the opposite direction.
Yeah. That was studied extensively by the traffic study and this was the best solution for it. And the applicant can talk about a little bit more when she comes up.
Okay, so the, thank you for that. The, there was a traffic study done, correct? So can someone summarize it? Because I don't think it was attached.
It wasn't. It wasn't required because it's a, it was an exemption done, so we don't need studies for a category exemption.
Right.
So, but they still know all the different issues with schools. They decided to do a traffic study on their own. They basically studied the traffic. It showed no impacts to the, to the street system. It can handle it. The circulation can handle it. The queuing was critical to that, how they queue. They have seventeen cars, they have seventeen cars queuing on the property. And if it got bad where it was impacting Wright Street, they can do a double stacking distance because it's one way in, one way out. So they can have two sets of cars. So double that stacking to forty cars, forty-two cars could be stacking on the property. So that's basically what it's set up. So there's no traffic impacts by this project. The staggered hours, the monitors, the queuing, plus the double queuing lane is a potential. All resulted in no impacts to the project. And Public Works reviewed it extensively and they concur with the study. And the traffic engineer is here this evening if you want to get a little, dive a little deeper into it.
And then, one more. The fencing, so it's a, they're seeking a ten-foot, they want to build a ten-foot fence. Do we have a rendering of, I know that we read wrought iron, but there's nice wrought iron and there's sort of institutionalized wrought iron, I guess.
So we do not have any renderings, but the applicant didn't note. And it is going to be required, but it's going to be an ornamental wrought iron fence. So very different from the traditional wrought iron, so.
Okay, thank you.
Beatrice?
Yes, I was just curious if you recall, did any of the community members ask about a possible traffic light? And the reason I'm asking is because that's my shopping area, grocery shopping area on Seventeenth that goes from Target to Superior to Albertson's. And when I try to make a left, whenever I go to these stores, it's always really hard because of traffic, no matter what time I go shopping. So was there any proposal for a traffic light since there's going to be a possible school there to avoid maybe accidents?
There was not. The traffic study didn't indicate it. It warranted it either. So no, no traffic light was envisioned at that location.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. Would the applicant at this point in time like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Katie Hart and I am the CEO of Ed Novate. And I'm here to represent the school on this project. I'm also here joined by many parents from our school this evening. Thank you so much for having us. I know there are many questions around the circulation on our site and particularly around traffic and parking. So I wanted to shed a little bit more light on kind of our day-to-day operations at our campuses now. As mentioned, we have a single point of entrance and a single point of exit within our campus right there. All of our staff would have the opportunity to park on our site and at full capacity, we have thirty to thirty-two staff at any given time. So as you heard, there's seventy parking spots on-site. And so we have more than adequate parking for our day-to-day staff members. We also have, we're also going to comply with all of the recommendations of the traffic study to ensure that we have queuing only on-site for pickup and drop-off. I also want to mention, it was previously mentioned that our students do not drive to school. But I also want to mention that our students come in many modes. So some of our students may walk to school. Some of our students take public transportation to school. And then many of our students actually carpool to come to school as well. So there's multiple modes of coming to school. And one of them is not that our students will actually drive to school. We have very strict operations at all of our campuses right now and one of which is monitoring the traffic and making sure that we comply with minimizing and having no impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. So that is absolutely part of our project and something that we will adhere to. One other thing that I'd like to mention as well is that we are going to be complying with this, the staggered start times and end times to minimize traffic and so that we will make sure that that helps alleviate any congestion as well. Also, we enjoy a great relationship with all of our families and have one-on-one meetings with them four times a year. And at the beginning of the year, it's very important to talk about things like operations and how to come into our site and how to exit our site and how to park, et cetera. And so part of the advantage of having a small school is having that really great relationship with each set of our parents to ensure that they understand the site plan and how we want to run operations on our site. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any additional questions anyone might have.
Say, Lynette?
When you mentioned the thirty to thirty-two staff, is that on your current operations? Or is that when you will have maximum capacity of four hundred and sixty students?
That's at maximum capacity. So we're quite a bit less right now.
So what's your staff count right now?
Right now, we have probably twenty to twenty-four staff members.
So you're going to double your, potentially double your students with just an addition of only potentially seven, eight staff?
Well, no, we'll have, so sorry, currently, we just had two grade levels and we'll be adding a grade level next year. And so we probably have the, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but we have probably mid twenties of staff members. And we have approximately five teachers per grade level. So right now, we have two grade levels. So that's ten teachers and the administrative staff. And so as we ramp up next year, we'll add another six teachers to our staff and the year after, we'll add another five teachers to our staff. So we have approximately twenty-one teachers at full capacity. And then we'll have ten to twelve administrative members at that time as well. And some of those will be helping with the traffic consideration.
Okay. And other two hundred and twenty students, you're saying none of those drive to school?
None of our students drive to school. And the majority of our students right now, we have ninth and tenth graders, so they don't, they can't drive as well.
So when they become seniors, what's your plan for driving?
So we have a no-drive policy that's been adopted by our board of directors and so they will have to find alternative modes to get to school.
Thank you.
Ken?
We have commissioned, we have received the petition signed by more than thirty resident neighborhoods around your school. They strongly oppose your school. Reason why? Because I, you know, if I live in that neighborhood behind the school, I can see the traffic flow around other residentialous around neighborhoods and so on. I would be concerned myself because especially during the time drop-off or pickup student from your school. I think, I'm not sure what result of your Sunshine Ordinance with the, with the meeting with neighborhood, but I think you should plan a better traffic flow and traffic study to not impact the surrounding neighborhood and especially surround resident. Because I noticed your, the staff report, this traffic flow go through a small residential and behind your school. That's my, one of my areas of concern.
Certainly. And at the Sunshine Meeting, we did hear some concerns around traffic. And so that was certainly a consideration as we were looking through what the best traffic scheme around the site. So as families are turning in right on Wright Street, they will be turning in then directly into our campus and then circling around and then turning back on to Seventeenth Street. So the intention of our traffic pattern is to have none of our families actually turned down into the neighborhood, which would go deeper into Wright Street. So that is not our intent at all. And in fact, we would have a traffic monitor at that location, ensuring that we don't have families going into the neighborhood within our traffic flow. So our intention is to have zero impact to the community. And the traffic study has shown us exactly how to do that. And we intend to comply with the recommendations of that traffic study. So we certainly want to hear from the neighbors locally because we are a partner in the work as we're located there. We have no intentions of having an impact on the community whatsoever.
So would you plan to have something like a traffic guard to prevent that from happening?
Absolutely, yes.
Beatrice?
Yes, I know there's potential to have four sixty students. How do you plan to recruit the two forty additional high school students?
Well, we currently have three hundred and fifty students enrolled for next year. And then a lot of our recruitment is word of mouth from our current families who may want to talk to their neighbors or friends that, our families that are satisfied with our school and really like our unique program. So that's part of it. And then also just talking to other local community organizations to see if our program meets the needs of students in the area.
Eric?
Earlier, you had mentioned that you, the current student mix is ninth and tenth graders. Is the increase from two twenty to three fifty, is that eleventh through twelfth grader, that grades that are being added?
We do a slow growth model, so we're actually adding a new freshman class this year. So all of our students will move up one grade level and then we'll add a freshman class starting in this August. And then the year after, we'll add our final freshman class until we grow to a full high school.
And then what's, sort of, what's the paradigm that you guys are using to educate these kids? That's, say, just your motto of how to educate versus maybe another charter school?
Sure. So I think what we offer unique to our students is that we are preparing our students for college. And then we also, our mission is to use our college degrees and careers to make a positive, multi-generational change. So our model is not just to meet A through G compliance so that our students are ready to go to college. And in fact, we look at six different facets of each one of our students to make sure that we are preparing them for a college-bound avenue and also that we are matching them with the right colleges for them to attend so they can be successful there. But we also ask our students every single year to reflect on how they're going to use that degree to come back to their communities and make a positive change. And we reflect a lot on that within our project work and also within our standard curriculum as well.
Thank you. Lynette?
So, one last question. So what is your construction timeline? Because I know that you're doing the addition, the four thousand nine hundred square feet. So how's that going to, the construction plan going to work with your, with your population growth? Do you expect to be in this site by the time you enroll your seniors or how's, how's that plan?
Yes, that is our intention. So we hope to start construction in the fall. And then construction, I believe, is going to be ten to eleven months, based on the renovations on the interior and also the addition. And so then we are projecting to have the site complete by the time our next school year starts.
Any other questions of Kate? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication on the site?
All communication received by the deadline has been distributed to you.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, we will open for public comment. If you haven't filled out a card, please do so. The first person I have is Bill Gunstream.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you pronounce that one correctly? Thank you. And Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My relationship with Ed Novate is one that just started about maybe five, six months ago. But I am the church administrator for the First Church of the Nazarene there in Santa Ana. We are the property right next to the east of this building that Ed Novate is looking at. And so we have been talking with them simply because they have, in their desire to move to that new location, they are actually having to find a larger place to are actually having to find a larger place to fill their next grade, which currently is nine and ten, and now moving to eleventh grade. So we have a, an educational building that is there that we have been working with them diligently on. And I have been working with the young lady that you spoke with, Katie Hart, over the last couple of months extensively in terms of lease arrangements and making sure that we are adhering to the kind of things that not only we would like to see, but would like to assist them with. And so I would tell you from a relational piece that, and that probably is probably my, my reason for primarily speaking in support of them, is the very fact that they have been very desirous to work with us. And I've been with them at one of their community meetings and desirous to work with those in the community in, in meeting the concerns that may have come up. So I certainly want to speak to that, that they just aren't providing lip service. But I have seen them step into things that we've looked at, and they are very desirous to work not only with us and the community, but certainly want to bring a, a great value of who they are to that community. The church has been there since nineteen seventy-five, and certainly, we have been longtime members, and I, and I haven't been there since that length of time, but they have been there a great length of time. And I recognize that even in our property, we have worked to become better members. Over the last couple of years, we have put up some railings around our property. And in fact, with, with Innovate coming on board, we'll be putting on a, an automated gate that helps provide a closed campus for the school, but not only serving as protection, but also provides for a better, secure piece of property. So at the end of the day, they were very responsive to us. But I wanted to share that perspective with you. I heard the conversation earlier about parking and some of the concerns about that, and I heard the various numbers that they have on their property. In working with us, they had only requested for three grades, thirty parking spots. We actually provided forty for them just to make convenience for that. We were able to do that. But just share that with you from a validation point of view of what they've brought to the council today. Just see if there's any other thoughts I would just share with you. That's for the most part. I just wanted to tell you my support of them. I really believe as a, as a school, a prep school in the area, that they would serve not only the community well, but we are looking forward to working with them, not just this year, but in the, in the year of transition and continuing. So we're looking forward to that. Any questions that I might be able to ask or answer?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner. By and large, our community strongly opposes the conversion of the current building into the charter school. While we commend their work on education in the local community, the traffic and noise implications for the residents are going to be totally unacceptable. Wright Street is essentially a residential street. Linwood and Eastside Avenue, all residential streets were not designed for the type of traffic that we're going to see. Simply put, that, that rendering and the site plan of the parking didn't make sense to many of us sitting back there, and I, I have a feeling that some of you guys also would agree. The residents of our neighborhood, neighborhood will struggle every morning to get to our jobs and schools because of the jams on either side of our exit routes from, from our street. If, if everybody, if every single one of their students and parents used the plan to drop off, we would still have major difficulty getting in and out. But we all know that traffic, the way traffic flows is just like water. If there's a jam on that side, they'll be coming in from the other side. We'll have trouble getting out from any, either direction from our homes, from our streets. We are all united as a community. You saw that we've, we have thirty signatures from the neighborhood. We have more and more people joining as, united with us to fight this development or find a better site. And we, we're supportive of the initiative of their school, but the site is not, is not feasible. I mean, from any direction, you can just imagine the disaster on Seventeenth Street, the disaster on Wright Street. It's not going to work. So, you know, once the school is complete, we will have no say and be stuck with a very poorly planned drop-off situation, and it's going to cause an unacceptable inconvenience to the residents of our neighborhood. So we've, we want to just voice our opinion now before we get too far. And we're not entirely opposed to the, the plan, but we want a better situation for the drop-off and for the parking. Frankly, when I hear that there's a no-parking policy and I have a car, that in real-world terms just means that I'm going to park in the neighborhood and walk down the street and go to school. That's what that means in real terms for most seniors and juniors. I'm just, you know, just being a realist about it. It's great, it's, the idea is great to have a no-parking poli, no-driving policy, but in real-world terms, to administer that operationally with a few people monitoring the situation, especially as we get deeper into the neighborhood, is, doesn't seem very realistic to me. But beyond the parking situation, my biggest concern is just the jam Wright Street and the jam on either side of our street will be, I mean, have to plan an extra forty-five minutes possibly to get to work every morning. And I, and anyone who lives along the school that works from home or has a home office will also be disturbed by basketballs bouncing potentially and noise. And that's a concern, a grave concern for anyone who works from home or works nights and sleeps during the day. So noise and traffic, big problems for us in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Seaton.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Mike Tardif. I live in the neighborhood, but on the other side of Seventeenth. I live on Nineteenth Street, just off of Wright. I think the charter school is a good project. I kind of wish it would be on our side of Seventeenth Street because what we have is an office building that's been vacant for many years. It's very dilapidated and rundown. We have problems, we have problems with homeless. Every other day, I'm calling the police department about homeless that are camping out there at that dilapidated vacant office building. Smaller office buildings, like the one we're talking about here, to be converted possibly to a charter. They just don't seem to be doing very well in the city. There, I would hate to see this office building turned into something like we have on our side of Seventeenth and Wright. I also noticed that this property is zone C5, which I believe if the current office building that's there now, and if it doesn't make it, and if it's not converted to a charter, it could possibly, by right, be converted to something like a seven-eleven, which I don't think would be very good for the neighborhood. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Blanca Alcaraz?
Good evening. My name is Blanca Alcaraz, and I live on Eastside, right next to Wright Street. And I'm opposed to the charter school because of the congestion. There's already a John Mear across the other side where all the parents are turning on Mayberry and also on Wright Street. There's a lot of congestion, and it would be a lot of trouble for us to get out from Eastside all the way going into Seventeenth Street. And all the streets next to Fourteenth Street, they're all already congested. People going through down Seventeenth Street, and it's just a big old mess. There's not that much parking on Wright Street. There's a church in the corner, and also the parking and the school. I just, I just opposed to it. I just don't want it due to the traffic. We just want to keep it as a community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, well, you can, you can speak. Please identify who you are and where you live, and then you can fill out a card.
My name's Steven Vincent. I live at fifteen twenty-two Eastside, so the house adjacent to the southwest corner of the proposal. For us, we're having an issue right now with the current building being underoccupied. We have a couple homeless that will transfer in and transfer out. They'll yell at me when I'm doing yard work in the back. And I agree that there are some concerns from a process flow of the vehicles entering and exiting. Regarding the vehicles parking in the community, I think if there was a formal punishment for the students, if they were to be found parking in the community, maybe could assess some of that issue. I haven't heard a proposal for that, but maybe that could be an issue, a adjustment of that issue. But yeah, I think the school could be a good means for the community to solve that building. So yeah, that's the Reader's Digest version.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone at this point in time that would like to speak on item number two? Hearing none. The public comments are closed, and we'll bring it back to the commission. Does anyone have a motion on item number two?
I make a motion to approve amendment application number two eighteen dash zero five, convariance numbers two eighteen dash zero four, number two thousand eighteen dash zero five, and number two thousand eighteen dash zero six with the Innovative Charter High School.
Okay. Is there a second to that? I'll second that, but I, I want to first make some- So there's a second, and then Lynette? I'm, I just really must say that I appreciate the, the comments that, that we heard from gentlemen from the church. That gave me a little bit more relief about the organization and the parking situation, which I had the most concerns about. I, I appreciate that there's also the no-drive policy. From what I'm hearing and from what I think the school did on the outreach, I, I do appreciate that I did not support a charter school, a variance on another project, but, and, and that was for traffic as well. But that one, it, they just didn't have, it didn't, I didn't feel comfortable with the situation with, with the way they outlined with their increase in enrollment was and how that was going to impact traffic and parking. I, I have a, I, I have a much better comfort level on this just based on some of the testimony that I'm hearing from the school. I, I agree that the, the, right now, there's not any traffic because the building is vacant or part, or mostly vacant. It's ninety percent vacant. So that's why we're not seeing any increase. But whatever type of business you're going to put in, in this building when it's a hundred percent occupied is going to create more cars. Coming into work, people coming into work, people going out to work. So to, to leave it status quo, yeah, you're absolutely not going to, not, not going to have an increase in traffic. But when it does happen, that's, that, that's still going to be a concern regardless of the usage. So that, that is my, my reason for, for supporting the, the changes. I, the setback, I don't think you can really do anything about that because it's, it was originally built that way. The fence, I encourage that because that's going to be around some of your amenities. And I don't think that the driveway variance from a hundred fifty to a hundred forty-two is going to make a substantial difference. So that, that is my, my reasoning for my support of the project or this application. Thank you, Lynette. Any other comments? I guess the one thing I would like to say is I, I absolutely agree with some of the comments made about traffic and everything else, and, and believe that that's always, unfortunately, if you look inside of Santa Ana, Santa Ana itself has probably seventy-five or so charter schools and schools. And I don't think there's any school in the city that doesn't have a traffic problem at the morning or in the evening when school gets, school, you know, when students come in and when the students get out. I think that we're always going to see some kind of traffic element in and around the school at those morning and afternoon hours. So I think that, I think though, what I would like to make sure is that the outreach from the school, you know, works with the neighborhood to make sure that in fact complaints are heard, complaints are listened to, and complaints are taken care of in, if it's parking or it's traffic or anything of that nature. Because that, to me, is contingent on what we're doing. And it's paramount that you satisfy the neighbors as well as the students. Eric?
One of the things I wanted to mention is, is about this ornamental fence. There's a lot of other things that have already been said that I won't repeat, but I think that one's a critical piece because fencing impacts the neighborhood, so does traffic. I agree that the traffic impact's going to be there irrespective of what this use is. If it gets used for some other use, that impact will be felt by the residents, and that's what happens when you near, you live near an arterial street. But I just want to make sure that that is not just a sort of garden variety fence. And I know ornamental can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people, so I hope the staff just takes the time to, to impress upon the applicant that this has to be something more than just black wrought iron that has an institutional look to it. That's it.
Beatrice?
I want to echo Mr. Chairman saying that there's always problems in schools. However, I'm going to have to say that I'm with the, the residents that signed the letter, the Route Thirty-Six, plus some of you that are here. I have little ones, and I can tell you, they could just run out of the street, whether it's a, you know, a parent dropping off or anybody, especially now with the use of just cell phones while people are driving. I'm concerned about the kids in the neighborhood. My best friend lives on Linwood, so, you know, kids are outside all the time, and that's one of the big reasons why I will be opposing the project. Also because, you know, I just don't see how you're going to bring in two hundred and sixty students more. There's a story that I want to share that a parent reached out to me to tell me, said that the student was pulled from a school because he was promised a scholarship, a full ride scholarship to USC if he went to that school. And when the parent inquired about that scholarship, they weren't able to give her, you know, full information. So I'm not sure how these students are, that's why I asked earlier, how are these students being recruited? But anyway, that's another reason why I'm not going to be supporting the project. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So the vote is five to one. Item number two is passed. Thank you. With that, we'll go on to our work-study session. And it has to do with the planning commission and the Brown Act information session.
I guess they're not interested.
I don't know, because it's a riveting topic.
I know, I know.
Okay.
I can't imagine why they left.
I'm hurt.
Oh, I'll, I'll go on and get them. We'll get them.
Okay. Um, good evening, commissioners. Tonight, we're just gonna do a brief, um, update training on the Brown Act and some other issues that have come to our attention that might need addressing. Um, let's see if I can do it right. Okay, a brief history of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was established by the City Charter Section nine oh nine and nine ten. And it was one of the three original commissions. The three original commissions were Planning Commission, Parks and Rec Board, and the Personnel Board. Um, this commission is part of the ci- city system of boards, commissions, and committees, which provide a way for residents who have special experience or interest to participate in the city's decision-making process by advising the city council on certain issues. The membership is set forth in nine ten, which talks about your rights and responsibilities. Um, those include periodically reviewing the city's general plan, making studies and plans for future civic land use, annually reviewing the city's CIP solely for consistency with the general plan, exercising such functions as to land subdivisions, zoning, and other city planning as may be prescribed by ordinance. The attributes of an effective commission member are being balanced, level-headed, and practical. Uh, you understand your community and the public process. Uh, you shouldn't have any conflicts of interest. You need to be objective, open-minded, and not tied to special interests. You should have a sincere desire to be engaged and involved in this community. The relationship with staff is such that staff will work with the commission, but the city staff is still accountable to the city manager. It's generally not within your purview or your authority to direct city staff work. It's not within your authority to tell the staff to prepare an amendment to the code, how to approach an issue, or how to process an application. If you have any input on any of those, you should share that with your council member who appointed you to this board. Um, this is just kind of a general overview of the, the agendas that we go over, consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar can typically be enacted by a single motion without discussion. If any member wishes to speak on a consent item here, she may request that it be removed for separate action. And it's normally approved before the new business items. And this is usually like, um, minutes and absences. Now, this might be, you know, basic to you, but I'm gonna go over it once. The general meeting format for business items. First, the chair announces the agenda item and clearly states the subject. Next, the commission hears the presentation of the staff report on the item. Then the chair invites a motion on the item and announces the name of the member making the motion. As you know, a motion is a request that the commission take action or approve an item. Then the chair invites a second to the motion and announces the name of the member making the second. If there's no second, then the motion cannot proceed. Then the chair restates the motion and presides over discussion and debate by the members. And you should wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking to keep your decorum in the meeting. Only once a person speaks at a time, and after all have spoken, the chair should repeat the motion on the floor, especially if the discussion has been lengthy. The chair will then call for a vote on the item, yes, no, or abstention. And then finally, the chair announces the result of the vote, seeks clarification from individual members of the votes if necessary, and the motion carries by affirmative vote of a majority of members. Otherwise, it fails. So your bylaws govern your meeting conduct and procedures through this commission. Every different commission has their own bylaws. And your chair presides the meetings and is responsible for seeing that agenda items are considered in an efficient and thorough manner. He also keeps the order of the meeting. Um, all the commission meetings are open and public. The Ralph and Brown Act or Brown Act requires local government business to be conducted at open and public meetings. This applies to the governing body of a local agency such as your city council, any commission committee or board that is created by formal action of the city council. So that would be like E-TAC.
Can we jump in and ask a question?
Sure.
So, um, I'm, I'm curious, is the statement that you said that the Planning Commission bylaws govern the conduct and procedure for commission in general. I've been told that, for instance, the council is not under Robert's rules, but the convention, but our commissions are under Robert's rules.
Yes.
So is that, I mean, in our bylaws right now, it says that the general convention for, uh, for this particular commission is Robert's rules.
I haven't looked at the, the bylaws, to be honest, but I, I think that it does have that. And if it doesn't, that's our fallback.
I'm just asking that from the standpoint that I heard that the city council doesn't go by Robert's rules.
Well, I've never heard that about the council.
Right.
Um, so ad hoc committee meetings are not, um, do not have to follow the Brown Act because they are temporary committees and they have less than a quorum that attends such meetings. Uh, good public policy. The Ralph and Brown Act is good public policy. California, like some other states, has concluded that there's more to be gained than lost by conducting public business in the open. Governmental action taking place behind closed doors is viewed as unresponsive and untrustworthy. Transparency is the foundational value of the Brown Act. So what is a meeting? A meeting is any gathering of a majority of members to hear or discuss any item of city business or potential city business. A meeting requires notice, an agenda, and a time for public comment. Unless a majority gathering falls into one of the Brown Act's exceptions to the definition of meeting, it will be considered a meeting subject to the Act. Does the Brown Act apply to face-to-face gatherings only? No. Meetings subject to the Brown Act are not limited to face-to-face gatherings. It also includes any communication medium or device through which a majority of the body discusses, deliberates, or takes action on a business item outside of a notice meeting. And this can include emails and texts. So along the lines of emails and texts, social media is awesome, but the internet never forgets. Perception is reality, and anything you say can and will be held against you. Once you say it, you can't take it back. Mistakes are magnified, and online conduct can be used as evidence in litigation. Um, with regard to social media, the city of Santa Ana has a prime interest and expectation in deciding what is spoken on behalf of the city on social media sites. You, uh, commission members are personally responsible for the content that you publish on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or any other form of social media. You should not post obscenities, slurs, uh, vulgarity, personal attacks, defo- defamatory statements. Those, those should not be posted by you, either personally or as a commission member. The city actually, um, had a task force put together to come up with a social media policy in two thousand fourteen and had a draft in two thousand fifteen, and then it never went anywhere. But we have a new personnel director, and he's very big on, um, policies. So that might be looked at again, and then US commission members would have to review and sign it, as would city staff. Um, so, let's see. If posting to personal networking or social media sites and speaking about the city of Santa Ana, you can identify yourself as a city of Santa Ana commissioner, but you should use a disclaimer to make it clear that the opinions expressed on the site are your own and do not reflect the views of the city or this commission. So basically, you should use common sense when posting on social media sites. Remember that what you write is public, and it may be public for a very long time, and may spread to large audiences. You should refrain from posting information that you would be embarrassed to see in the newspaper or on television. So before posting, you should ask yourself if you would want your mom, or the city manager, or the director of planning to see. And if not, then you shouldn't post it. Okay. What you say or show on social platforms becomes part of your digital footprint. And as a public official, your posts, whether personal or professional, reflect not only upon you, but also upon the city. So to sum up, as a commissioner, the line between public and private is blurred. And social media used by a city or its officials raises numerous First Amendment issues as well as Public Record Act and Brown Act concerns. Right. So we'll go back to the Brown Act. Um, teleconferencing. We had a couple of meetings where we have some of our members teleconferencing, so I just wanted to go over the rules. The defin- definition of a teleconference is a meeting of a legislative body, the members of which are in different locations, connected by electronic means through either audio, video, or both. At least a quorum of the body must participate from locations within the local agency's jurisdiction. So at least four of you would have to be here in Santa Ana. Each teleconference location must be specifically identified in the notice and agenda, including a full address and room number as applicable. The agenda must be posted at each teleconference location, even if it's a hotel room or your mom's house. And each teleconference location must be accessible to the public and have technology such as a speakerphone to enable public participation. And the very important thing is that all votes on a teleconference must be by roll call. Okay, Brown Act exceptions. The Act does not apply to individual contacts between a member of the commission and any other person, such as a phone call to candidate or a, you know, talking to staff on a certain project. But individual contacts, yes?
I have a question. Uh, this is the first time that I hear that we needed to put a room number. Um, in the last photo that I shared, uh, I don't think there was a room number. Do I need to go back and get it, or?
So were you at a hotel?
Yes.
And you didn't, it didn't say the room number?
I mean, I didn't, I don't think it was.
Not that specific? Okay.
Is that a big deal or?
No. I think, and it's just, it's just-
School address and room number.
Yeah. It's just to comply with the Brown Act. Um, you know that the fact of the matter is no members of the public in Florida are gonna come to your room to be participating in the hearing.
And, and also there's, um, unless we, it's in the, I, I'm gonna give an example. I, uh, I had a change hotels, so then I couldn't have participated in the conference call because-
Oh, right. It was posted. Right.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. If it's, if the agenda's already been posted and it says you're at a certain place, and then you end up at a different location, then you couldn't participate. You could participate and listen if you wanted, but you couldn't participate in the hearing itself.
Okay.
Or this, or the vote. Okay. So individual contacts cannot be used to do in stages what would be prohibited in one step. And this is the concept of a serial meeting. So under the Brown Act, the majority of the members of a legislative body shall not, outside a meeting, use a series of communications of any kind, directly or through intermediaries, to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So you're not, you should not be co- developing a collective concurrence or, um, trying to build consensus. Um, what's the problem with serial meetings? The problem is that it deprives the public of an opportunity to observe and participate in decision-making. So this, these serial meetings can occur either by a daisy chain or the hub-and-spoke sequence. So the daisy chain is when member A contacts member B, B contacts C, et cetera, until a quorum has discussed and come to a consensus or action on an item. The hub-and-spoke is where A sequentially contacts B, then she contacts C, then she contacts D, and then shares ideas with the majority. So you should avoid serial meetings. Direct contacts about city business with fellow members are the clearest means by which a serial meeting can occur. If one participant discloses the views of the other participant to a third or fourth member, this is what's considered a serial meeting. So the best way to avoid is to refrain from discussing agency business with a quorum or sharing views of others outside a formal meeting. Communications with staff. Members of the commission, of course, can consult with the city staff outside of a meeting for questions or information on a, on a matter or project. Staff and commissioners should be very careful not to disclose the comments or position of any other member, uh, that, because this can, again, facilitate a collective concurrence outside of a noticed and open meeting and result in Brown Act violation. So what are some exceptions to the Brown Act? Um, attendance at seminars and conferences that are open to the public and of general interest, attendance at community meetings that are open and publicized, attendance at meetings of other legislative bodies, or social or ceremonial occasions. The caveat and the thing to be careful is if a majority is present at any of these, you should not be discussing any items of city business, or it could be considered a meeting. Yes.
So having said that, basically, if one or two or four commissioners decided to go to a sunshine meeting and not discuss anything, that's perfectly fine.
Yes. You can sit there and observe and, yeah.
Okay.
As long as you're not all sitting together and whispering, looking like you're talking about the project or anything. I mean, you're, that, you have to be careful of the perception of the public.
I understand.
Yes.
But I mean, it's also, it's also getting the perception of the public.
Yes. Observing.
When you go to a meeting like that, because, you know, you wanna see what the reaction is in some respect, but you don't have to talk about it or discuss it or anything of that nature.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Notice and agenda requirements.
But also, come to a meeting to put on-
Yes. Yes. I mean, it, so what candidate wanted to mention as well is even if you go and you sit through a sunshine ordinance meeting, if the project's going to be coming before you as a leg- as a body here, you have to be able to remain open-minded, unbiased, and, and able to make a clear decision based on the, the facts and the staff report and everything presented to you. Be able to make the findings that are presented.
Sure.
Yes.
That's, I mean, you know, that goes back to the first page, you know, hearing, make conscious decisions. And, and so, you know, again, we're making, we're trying to make as much decisions with as much information as we can possibly get. It's, it is difficult, and I think it's proven in a couple of situations where, because we've had lack of information that could have been provided through other means, we postponed actions until we got that information. I think that's also something that, you know, we can avoid if we're exposed to these things all along the way in the process, not just that last meeting when it comes to come to the commission.
Okay. Notice and agenda requirements. Uh, for regular meetings, agendas must be posted in a place freely accessible to the public and on the city website seventy-two hours in advance, although Santa Ana with its sunshine ordinance requires ninety-six hours. Uh, for special meetings, agendas must be posted at least twenty-four hours in advance. And the agenda must contain a brief general description of each item of business, not to exceed twenty words. Discussion of non-agenda items. There are limited exceptions. Uh, members may briefly respond to public comments or questions and provide a referral to staff or other resources. Members may ask questions for clarification. Members re- may report on their own activities. And members may request staff to report back on a matter or issue. Uh, public participation. The Brown Act requires two types of public comment periods. There's the general audience public comment, which is during, um, during which the public makes comments on non-agenda items. And then there's the specific agenda item comments, which must be heard prior to consideration of the item, your agenda item. Uh, the enforcement of the Brown Act. The violation can be a criminal misdemeanor, but most often the act is civilly enforced to invalidate actions taken in violation of the act or to stop or prevent future violations. One can only seek judicial intervention after making a written demand on the body to cure or correct the alleged violation. Compliance results more often from regular training and self-regulation. A member cannot be criminally liable for a violation of the Brown Act unless it is shown that that member intended to deprive the public of information to which it is entitled. That's a relatively high standard to satisfy. And the filing of a criminal complaint is at the discretion of the district attorney. Criminal prosecutions are relatively uncommon. And how do you resolve a Brown Act violation? Um, the Act doesn't specifically say how to cure or correct. Uh, the best method is to rescind the action that's being complained of and start over and do it properly with proper notice. And with that, uh, we want to thank you. We appreciate all that you do to serve on this commission. It's a lot of time and energy, and the staff and the city and community appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Any questions, Lisa? Thank you. Okay, with that, we will close our work-study session and come back to staff comments.
Just, uh, one update. Um, at the special meeting of May tw- June twenty-first, there was a question regarding the Metro East Side, um, specific plan, when, and it's going before the Planning Com- specific plan and when that's going before the Planning Commission. The item, the SEQA document, has been completed and is publicly circulated on June 12th. Is it available on our website?
Yes, and in the library and at our public counter.
So we can also provide a link to all the Planning Commission. If you want to review that document, it is publicly available. We anticipate that the items will be going to public hearing shortly after the circulation period of 45 days. So, quick update.
Yes, we do not have a first meeting in July, so elections will be held at the second meeting, so... And have a happy Fourth, everybody.
Ken? Any Commissioner comments?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Beatrice?
Yes, happy Fourth of July to all of you, since we're not going to be meeting until the end of the month.
Cynthia?
When is the next meeting?
23rd?
I won't be here. I'll be gone July 16th through the 24th. To Italy.
Sure, rub it in. Rub it in. What else? And where else are you going besides Italy?
Just in the last year, like, 100 and...
Okay. Eric?
Hi, no comments.
Lynette?
No comments, just have a safe Fourth of July.
I hope everybody has a safe Fourth of July, too. And one thing I do want to come back to, and the reason for asking the question is to say that, you know, we as a commission have at least asked several times why we're not getting included in the sunshine ordinance notification. And so we'd like... I mean, I'd like to propose that we have that considered as an opportunity. It doesn't mean we have to go. It doesn't mean it's an obligation. I just think that we ought to have knowledge of the actions being taken. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I was in a meeting, and essentially, somebody came up to me and said, hey, what do you think about that new project? And I was like clueless, because this individual had gone and seen the sunshine and thought it was a great project, but I had no idea that it was happening.
We can look into that. Sunshine ordinance meetings are hosted by the applicant, but perhaps we can change our mailing and noticing procedures to include you in that.
But correct me if I'm wrong, planning doesn't have any involvement in the sunshine ordinance, but they do... There are dictated requirements that come from planning to identify what needs to be done. And this could become one of those items, if it's not already.
We can work with our attorney office to make the adjustment.
Okay. I mean, it's... Again, I go back to my basic statement, trying to get information sometimes and having more information is helpful because we seem to be getting less information. I mean, even tonight, I think several commissioners noted, you know, where's the traffic study? It's not here. Where's the sunshine ordinance? Where's the sunshine notes? And it wasn't here. And although we could have asked that question ahead of time, we didn't, but we did ask the question, so...
Your concerns are noted. Thank you.
With that, we'll adjourn the meeting till the June... I'm sorry, the July 23rd meeting. And everybody have a safe and fun Fourth of July. Enjoy it.